Order. Roll call.
Yes. Sue, Leo, Jim Schreger.
Here.
Tom Jerk.
Yep.
Jeff and Tim.
I'm here.
Tim Searsenfer.
Here.
Isaiah.
I am here.
And I'm here.
And Sue will be later, she said. She'll probably be running late. I approve the posting. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands, its own nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion approved agenda. So, wait a second.
Second.
The discussion? Jim?
Uh, yes, no discussion.
Sandy, yes.
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Motion to approve the minutes from the fifteenth. Any discussion? Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Alrighty, my report. I'd like to thank the staff for the Climate and Culture Committee meeting administration. A lot of good ideas got going and I think there's a, I think a lot, I got a lot of hope that we can get stuff moving and help improve the climate and culture of the district. And I look forward to the next meeting, which is fourteenth?
No, the twelfth. Fourteenth would be Friday.
Okay, I don't want to cancel it. To being there and I hope, you know, we can get the board members that can come, to come. Uh, let's see, other than that?
I'll just re-brief here because I'll be talking a lot in a couple areas later tonight. But I thought as I passed on the board some good ideas coming out of the convention, some ideas to think about, questions. One of the things that's coming out a little bit or suggested at one of the sessions is that the board president and district administrator reports that if we're talking about things that aren't on the agenda, we're going to start listing those out. So I'll kind of public it and putting that there. So with that said, I'll start that, you know.
You'll start that?
Yeah, we'll start that the next meeting. So with that, I'll stop my comments and we'll go on to the ones later on.
Policy committee of January twenty ninth.
Well, as you can kind of see below, we talked about the graduation requirements that we're going to propose up the board. They added credit science and a credit math, starting with the sophomore class?
Freshman class.
And so they came up with the alternatives of adding, they were accounting and.
Yeah.
Cap math.
Electives.
Electives, so they can be electives math. Or something, math credits. And then.
Wildlife.
What was it?
Wildlife.
Wildlife and what's it?
Greenhouse.
Greenhouse for the science, which is actually really cool because they're allowed to broaden a little bit more. Keeps our elected people very much employed, so that's really nice. So then funds management, six sixty mark.
Sure, and that's, it's, uh, what we're talking from is on page nineteen in the summary. Which one, funds and management, just a recommendation from the audit, that we, there was a repurchasing agreement, which is part of the state statute. We're just, we put all the clauses into the current, or what is proposed to be the next revision of the current policy.
And then talking about snowmobile use, that, you know, with the new wolf run trail going in, if they want to use it after hours, where do they got, where do they got to park, where do they got to go? That's kind of what we kind of highlighted. Food service denial, you have the zero balance.
Well, the more the updates is have the notification. So currently, and Scott and I spoke a little bit today, is currently people, although it's not on his end, he doesn't see that, there's not a box to check, send email, but it's actually being sent. So we just, we're saying that, you know, we're ensuring one type of electronic communication.
And then for work, the site that was still working on the eight thirty policy with facilities use, but that's still kind of in development, so to speak. Working with some community members to create that umbrella group for all users, kind of have everybody under one if they so choose, to save on insurance money for when they use the school facilities. That's still in progress. And fund balance, did you want to talk about that?
I'll talk about that later.
Okay, and then we're going to do.
Mission and vision later, too.
Yep, mission and vision later. As far as the AV coordinator, Jeff coordinator, I'm going to try to come up with some consolidating ideas for that.
Yeah, it's just sort of like practices or what we like to do.
Which we'll kind of talk a little later.
Okay, cool. Alright, public input, Mr. Jopkin, overnight travel requests.
Hi. Um, just a question for the, for the board and whatever else, but we have a week two game this year for football that falls on that liberate weekend. And last year, with the fact that it's in Oak Claire, we were hoping to be able to stay overnight and we were turned out last year. And I guess I, I don't know what else, I, I'm trying to ask right now to see if there's anything that preclude us from going, because there's no cost of the list at some point.
Well, there's a policy that, there's a policy that requires things being filled out.
Okay.
And then it would go to building administration, building administration approves it, then it goes to the board.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe this year then, rather than just flat out, know somebody will be able to explain that to them. If that's what the more works, so. I just, I was curious how it worked. It wasn't explained last year, I'd asked at least twelve times, you know, and I just heard, you know, there's kids that go to California, including my own son, for a week, and can't play across the country, we've got band members going on. I just want to take a football team overnight for a month, and so I thought I'd ask, so if that's the appropriate mode, I guess my question's been answered.
Reason?
What?
Talk to who?
Bill and administration.
Bill and administration?
Yep.
Okay.
Work with you, Austin.
It's through Jason first.
Very well, thank you very much.
Alrighty. Alrighty, presentation on student enrollment.
So this is starting on page five of the packet, just kind of wanted to illustrate, I've talked about this a little bit, but just wanted to show numbers in terms of variability for this year. You can see also from last year, you know, last year, our stu-, this is enrollment, not FTE, these are students in their seats. So in twenty twelve, thirteen, we had seven hundred and fifty students. And at the beginning of school, we were seven oh seven bumped up to seven twelve. We've had a moderate increase, which is a good thing, up to seven twenty-four. But a couple of reasons for this is one, is to illustrate the changes that have occurred throughout the year. We're currently a three-section district, more or less three sections per grade. But, you know, the trends, the variability, why so much? A part of it is the new open enrollment, that there's a clause that says it's in the best interest of students, they come in and out, because we've benefited both ways. But I'm just kind of illustrating the highs and lows, and this would be much more than the previous year. We go to page six for perspective. This also demonstrates some of the variability, not in terms of the range, of class sizes, smallest to largest. And as you can tell, we have changed dramatically since the first year of twenty, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. I mean, in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we were at eight hundred and ninety-three, we are currently projecting to be at six eighty-four next year. The other thing on the far side, and averages don't always tell the story, but it kind of shows some changes just in average class size. So in the, in the packet again, on the far right side, it's not a part of the chart, but just as a comment, changes in averages. You can see that our high school classes have changed no more than sixteen, as high as twenty-two over time, in terms of ranges. So, I mean, I give all people a lot of credit, actually even more dramatically, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, our student population was nine hundred and fifty-eight. So we're actually down three hundred from that timeframe. Projecting out, and, you know, the thirty-seven for four K is low next year. We currently have sixty-one students that potentially could attend, but we also have a high number of students in that four K class, in which their siblings have chosen not to attend Wisconsin nights. So the realistic low is probably thirty-seven right now, a high maybe forty-two, forty-three. So significant is the best way to put it. We'll also note that if, if student population is as projected, our high school may be under two hundred next year. So in terms of planning, and you can see the ranges, our class sizes will range between thirty-seven and sixty. And why am I bringing this up? And on the next page kind of shows the cohorts. So the projections, I feel pretty good on twenty fourteen, fifteen, twenty fifteen, sixteen, outside of that, you know, we're, we can go get the numbers, but, you know, going further out is a little, I'll say iffy. But next year, we're projecting to decrease by slightly, just almost four percent. So again, you know, even, even the past, since oh seven, oh eight, compared to the last three years, our class sizes, average class size has gone now from fifty-two and a half to forty, forty-five point seven. So I'm sure Austin's experiencing this a little bit in just setting up the high school, or for that matter, middle school schedule. You know, again, you can tell that there's been significant changes in the past couple of years. And my, the reason I bring this up to you is just to give you perspective as we start planning for the future, and then also to ask what questions would you like us to dive into and then bring back to you as a board to help with any decision-making process. As a result, because of our decline in enrollment, the formula says we're becoming richer because we're still, even if we hold the amount of, the budget's the same, for example, I'm not proposing that, even with fewer students, we're spending more per student.
Doesn't it decline the students?
Because of the decline of student threat, yep. And that goes with the shared cost and the formula. But any other questions? I did have Jason give me a short what-if, in terms of what would, what would be the impact on athletics, I can bring that at some point in time. We went, you know, every sport has different parameters based on the number of divisions. And, you know, the best way to look at it is, there's always the smallest one twenty-eight, and in most cases, there's the largest one twenty-eight, and then everybody else falls out before. But if we dip to two hundred, basically the scenario we ran was, if a school district was two hundred this year, what would it look like? You know, the reality also is seventy-five percent of all districts in the state are in climate. So we're not alone, ours is one more dramatic, but we're not alone there.
The third Friday calendar is in September?
Correct, third Friday in September, second Friday in January. Yep, and those are the two standards. The one thing, the one word of caution about second Friday in January, I've been informed by the people, we just number people, third Friday is usually the best indicator. So even though we've went up twelve, the third Friday is usually where you return to. So we were projecting seven twenty, so I'm hoping that we'll stay up. That was, that was our goal last year, what we thought based on projection models, and we had the third Friday in September, we were at seven twelve.
Other questions?
Other questions or things you would like to have looked at?
Not looking good at all, no.
Yeah.
Got to deal with what we got to deal with.
Yeah, right, next year, we're projecting to have two classes in the elementaries at forty-two, and one hundred, actually, and one at thirty-seven.
Are we dropping percentage-wise comparable to other schools or?
No, we, ours would be more significant.
Okay, any more questions?
Did we do a survey this year on the open enrollment, just to see why they're anything?
We have not done it this year, you know, traditionally, we have five students that never come to our district in four K. The surveys of the past couple of years have said their parents want their students attending schools in their place of work, which are not in our district. We add about five from four K to five K because people choose to keep their children home, or they, they go to a two-day option as opposed to a five-day option, that's, you know, personal choice. You see some changes, you know, it's one thing, which I'm very proud of, the work that we've done to provide quality and varying opportunities. We still have gaps from an eighth grade to ninth grade, we add a little bit there, but then also, you know, we also lose students. If you look at open enrollment, where are our largest classes or cohorts? It's actually in the high school, no matter not that will historically change, you know, that's something we'll watch. But the biggest open enrollment outs have been, you know, right now, in our district are, are there, actually, we may benefit a little bit from that by the numbers being out this year, we just may not replace that, so.
Pete, you had a comment?
Yeah, can I make a comment? Well, first of all, I agree wholeheartedly with the statement, Dad, I think our kids are doing fine. I'm just speaking for my own two, the educational experience, I, I think is well done, the staff has been very open, top-notch, up, all the way through, and I've been here, both my kids will have attended all twelve or thirteen years, I guess. I guess my big question, or comment, would relate to, I think things are well over here, but the question I would have for you folks out there is, what are you doing to market yourselves? You know, I, when I talk to people from Madison or elsewhere, I see, I see our veteran communities that are just exploding, I mean, you just got to go to them on board and see that they're going to have to build a new school probably soon, that they're running out of space. You know, some hurry want to keep, yeah, they're a little different, but we're all kind of driving, most of us, to work someplace else, and I guess there's a lot of good things about this district, and perhaps it's time to look at how you market the education that we get here. And maybe that's being done and I'm just not aware of it, but, you know, you look at the website, it's, if I'm, if I'm looking to buy a house, and I've got a young family, that's the first thing I look at. I think there's plenty of good things here, and what are you doing to sell them? What are you doing to sell them? Where do you put them? The numbers that I just heard are, you know, I, we're not D.C., we're not Western, we're not, whatever, we're in the second highest populated county in the state, there's no reason why we shouldn't be drawing people here. And I don't have the answer, I'm just making a comment, trying to be positive, but perhaps you have a marketing plan or strategic plan, and all based on how you're going to, whether it be dealing with realtors, associations.
And that has been done, I know Tom and Jim have worked on having realtors and bankers here. You know, his committee on the PR has been working for it.
Okay.
I know, you know, we got the signs up here, and we got brochures, you know, I don't, short of hiring, uh, marketing.
Yeah, I don't have the answer, I'm just saying it. You know, how do you get the word out? What, you know?
I think.
We can't wait for them to come here, we're going to have.
Absolutely, but if you look at, you know, I'll ask, I'll ask a tough question, what are our downtowns look like?
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
And so what I'm suggesting is, it's a community, it's not, it's not just one entity, it's a priority question.
Yeah.
I think it's a bigger, better question. But I mean, I think, I mean, short of hiring a marketing consultant and spending money on that, I don't see that happening. You know, I'd rather put the money in to make sure we got the teachers paid and buildings up.
Oh, you're not going to be able to do that from West, you got the sewers, so. But again, it's just a comment, I mean, and don't look at it as a negative, because it certainly isn't meant to be that way, it's just how you, how you build off of a positive, where we're facing what almost looks like a crisis, in a sense, just from an oversight.
Right.
That's all. I appreciate it.
And we had some flyers coming from the schools to the teachers and contractors.
Yeah, I think.
They were available at area restaurants and stuff too, and I'm sure they're still up.
But that, you know, I mean, we got to reach farther than that, and we got to hit right to one, tell two, so, you know, our kids do well.
And we need to prove how they do well.
How they do well.
Just in test scores, I think that you and I had touched on something my first day, that was something that would be nice someday to work on, is following up on what they do when they leave here, and showing the successes of a lot of our students. I know like the fifth year thing, but I'm talking about like, you know, some of that follow-up.
Well, the VAERS, the VAERS exists, so it's.
So maybe using some other vehicles it is to get that information, because I think we, I think the kids who leave here do very well, they do very, very well, but we don't know enough about it to like, you know, chewed our own horn sometimes, you know? And I think that that's what we're missing, you know, that's, that's that tie-in, I think, that sometimes we're missing. I mean, you look at the paper, they're getting, they're getting out marketed by St. Francis. I mean, maybe think of the paper, I know we're not supposed initially to do that, but they say, come and roll this, you know, it's, it's great, you know, I mean, it's, it's in the paper, it's in your face, you see it, I just don't see us doing that, not, not that we have to, but there are some things I wish we could just get on in a different way.
And, you know, that, that has been approached and talked about at least since I've been on the board several times over the years, so, you know, I guess maybe that we need to put back, you know, and have, you know, maybe the PR committee can have some more talks and discussions on. You know, and I think they were working on, on stuff tonight, which we'll find out in the next meeting, so.
If you make the community part of the solution, it's, it goes a long way.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, and think of yourselves, just because you're in government, doesn't mean you can't be entrepreneurial government either.
Not arguing.
So.
Not arguing. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Athletics, motion to approve Scott Wood as volunteer coach for a model thirteen, fourteen girls softball this second. Any discussions? Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Alrighty, budget and finance, discuss possible action on engagement letter from Johnson Block. I imagine this is our agreement, have a wanted.
This is a yearly engagement, right?
Yep.
I'll move it, we use Johnson Block again.
Second.
More discussion. Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Alright, budget and finance, discuss possible action on engagement letter from Johnson Block. I imagine this is our agreement, have a wanted.
This is a yearly engagement, right?
Yep.
I'll move it, we use Johnson Block again.
Second.
More discussion. Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Last rule, discuss possible action on twenty fourteen roofing projects.
Well, Lock, this started on page sixteen, we had, I believe, twelve, twelve roofing companies and two masonry groups come in, were part of the bid process, you had to be present in order to submit a bid, five submitted a bid. IRS, our consultant, evaluated the three, what I'll call the three lowest bids, you have their recommendation to go with JRT. One of the, a couple of things, so that's roof twelve, which is above the boiler, eighteen, which is the high school office area, or former high school office area, and then fourteen is, I'll just say, a majority of the high school. And I asked them and got a, a proposal in terms of when they wanted to get work done, I think as I've shared with the board. They thought this would probably happen over two years of trying to budget out and plan out. There is, our, our challenge of the year is with our one-time money from the utility settlement, as well as the DOT dollars, in order to not impact our aid, which the board can consciously choose to do, but we have to spend at least, and we couldn't say this before the bidding process, you know, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, to keep things predictable. If we save the money, put it away, then in two years, our aid would be reduced, and then it'd be made up on the level.
That's by July one?
By July one, yeah, but actually go up the first year and drop out the second year, and well, again, negative tertiary aid. So I developed on page eighteen, three scenarios, more or less, that would, would more, that I, you know, thought could happen. And at the same time, I asked our consultant to get, to get a proposal in terms of getting work to be done, or when they thought they could start, and I'll get to that later. But basically, option one was getting two roofs and some mason work done, but then trying to figure out, again, how to spend the three hundred and seventy-two thousand. And part of it is a sequencing component of making sure we, we spend the money, but also are able to do work the next, in the summer, just finish stuff off. And so the reality is, it's probably someplace between option one and option three, but this is kind of the management and financial component of it. So I think the reality is, and this is roofs twelve and eighteen can get done without any educational, how should, impact educationally, you know, it impacts some adults, but they're small areas, et cetera. We also need to do roof twelve before we do roof fourteen, because we don't want to be, we don't want the roofers to be walking over a new roof. So do twelve and then backs out this way, if they're doing it that way. So then option two says, hopefully we can do twelve eighteen masoning and a partial completion of roof fourteen. That, that gets us to where we need to be, and then we can do some of the work in fourteen fifteen. Put option three out there because the, the recommended roofer said, well, we could start as early as March twelfth, was a little, which was a little bit of a shock. But, so we went through a scenario, and that's what Randy here and I were working on a little bit, is if, you know, what would be the impact of using short-term borrowing to get all the work done, if they could get it all done or not. Also met with Asta and Bill, and, you know, more specifically with Asta, just in terms of the impact, and this is what it would look like as, as proposed, and yes, I think in the end, you know, there's an impact, so I have a call into IRS saying, we've got to push this back so we can get the work done. But the balancing part is, in a sense, to the board to fill in is do, you know, this is unrelated, but it's related, now I've got to find out, do we do some wireless work to fill in what we aren't spending in roofing during this year? And so the reality is, we can do all this work, it's just I'm making you aware of that, to get it done with less educational impact, we're just going to have to, how should I put it? I am wanting to make sure it's okay to move forward, I'll definitely negotiate a May one start date, which I think would eliminate a lot of, if not all, all the concerns, but I'll know more once I get a phone call. But otherwise, then there's different financial planning, so I, you need to know this before you approve the plan. So to summarize, the reality is, we probably will get two roofs done, some masonry work, and hopefully part of fourteen, but we may need to work around that, you know, we just got to figure out how much we can get done. But if we can't spend all the three seventy-two, then I'll address other projects, and then that gets rolled into the next year. And then that's where the fund balance draw, as we've talked about, because we're at three point three six, we would use some of this to get it done, instead of going to a, a building referendum, which we thought this time last year, we would have been marketing two months ago. So in a sense, you know, the least amount of educational impact is we spend down in fund balance in fourteen fifteen, we may overspend a little bit of this budget, but, you know, it's based on, we just don't know how much of roof fourteen can get done or will get done, and, and there's going to be weather, too. I asked our consultant, when would a normal start date be, the average start date, he thought about April one, so that's where we're at. So we have money in both years' budgets to get all the work listed done, but how we get it done, it's probably closer to option two, and it won't be option three. Hopefully it may, they can also work a second shift, I, I don't have my sun dial out, but, you know, they can work, you know, perhaps they can do prep work, maybe they can work one to eight, starting May fifteenth, they may be able to shift that way. Now, the other thing I will share, I do not know what the impact of the proposed increased wages would be, living wages as well as minimum wage. You know, this is government contract, so it has to be, you know, conform with federal standards. I don't, I don't know that impact, but, you know, there's a twenty thousand dollar allowance in this project, so that may be good, may get eaten up if wages are increased. I don't have any specific information that I wanted to share, more of an awareness and a statement.
What would, what would the parking lot work entail?
Parking lot is lighting, so the, that would be the light, so right now, with the DOT project, the three closest to the highway will be decommissioned, if you will. Currently, the system.
So maybe using some other vehicles it is to get that information because I think we, I think the kids who leave here do very well. They do very, very well, but we don't know enough about it to like, you know, chewed our own horn sometimes, you know? And I think that that's what we're missing, you know, that's, that's that tie in, I think, that sometimes we're missing. I mean, you look at the paper, they're getting, they're getting out marketed by St. Francis. I mean, maybe think of the paper, I know we're not supposed initially to do that, but they say come and roll this, you know, it's, it's great, you know? I mean, it's, it's in the paper, it's in your face, you see it, I just don't see us doing that, not, not that we have to, but there are some things I wish we could just get on in a different way.
And, you know, that, that has been approached and talked, talked about at least since I've been on board several times over the years. So, you know, I guess maybe that we need to put back, you know, and have, you know, maybe the P R committee can have some more talks and discussions on it. You know, and I think they were working on, on stuff tonight, uh, which we'll find out in the next meeting.
If you make the community part of the solution, it's, it goes a long way. So, you know, and think of yourselves, just because you're in government doesn't mean you can't be entrepreneurial government either.
Not arguing.
So.
Not arguing. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, athletics, motion to approve Scott Wood as volunteer coach for all thirteen fourteen girls softball. Any discussions? Jim?
Yes.
Sammy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. All right, uh, budget and finance, discuss possible action on engagement letter from Johnson Block. I imagine this is our agreement to have a wanted.
This is a yearly engagement, right?
Yep.
I'll move it, we use, uh, Johnson Block again.
Second.
More discussion. Jim?
Yes.
Sammy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Uh, we'll discuss possible action on twenty fourteen roofing projects.
So, lock it, this started on page sixteen, uh, we had, I believe, twelve, twelve roofing companies and two masonry groups come in. Were part of the bid process, you had to be present in order to submit a bid, five submitted a bid. I R S, our consultant evaluated the three, what I'll call the three lowest bids, you have their recommendation to go with J R T. One of the, a couple of things, um, so that's roof twelve, which is above the boiler, eighteen, which is the high school office area. Or former high school office area, and then fourteen is, I'll just say a majority of the high school. And I asked them and got a, a proposal in terms of when they wanted to get work done, because I've shared with the board. They thought this would probably happen over two years of trying to budget out and plan out. There is, our, our challenge of the year is with our one-time money from the utility settlement as well as the D O T dollars. In order to not impact our aid, which the board can consciously choose to do, but we have to spend at least, and we couldn't say this before the bidding process. Yeah, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, to keep things predictable. If we save the money, put it away, then in two years, our aid would be reduced and then it'd be made up on the level.
That's by July one?
By July one, yeah, but actually go up the first year and drop out the second year. And well, again, negative tertiary aid. So, I developed on page, um, eighteen, three scenarios, more or less, that would, would more, that I, you know, thought could happen. And at the same time, I asked our, our consultant to get, to get a proposal in terms of getting work to be done, or when they thought they could start, and I'll get to that later. But basically, uh, option one was getting two roofs and some mason work done, but then trying to figure out again how to spend the three hundred and seventy-two thousand. And part of it is a sequencing component of making sure we, we spend the money, but also are able to do work the next, in the summer, just finish stuff off. And so, the reality is, it's probably someplace between option one and option three, but this is kind of the management and financial component of it. So, um, I think the reality is, and this is roofs twelve and eighteen can get done without any educational, how should, impact educationally. You know, it impacts some adults, but they're small areas, et cetera. We also need to do roof twelve before we do roof fourteen because we don't want to be, we don't want the roofers to be walking over a new roof. So, do twelve and then backs out this way if they're doing it that way. So then option two says, hopefully we can do twelve, eighteen masoning and a partial completion of roof fourteen. That, that gets us to where we need to be, and then we can do some of the work in fourteen, fifteen. Put option three out there because this, the recommended roofer said, well, we could start as early as, um, March twelfth was a little, which was a little bit of a shock. But, so we went through a scenario, and that's what Randy here and I were working on a little bit, is if, you know, what would be the impact of using short-term borrowing? To get all the work done, if they could get it all done or not. Also met with Asta and Bill, and, you know, more specifically with Asta, just to, and in terms of the impact, and this is what it would look like as, as proposed. And yes, I think in the end, you know, there's an impact, so I have a call into I R S saying, we've got to push this back so we can get the work done. But the balancing part is, in a sense, to the board to, to fill in is do, you know, this is unrelated, but it's related. Now I've got to find out, do we do some wireless work to fill in what we aren't spending, um, in roofing during this year? And so, the reality is, we can do all this work, it's just I'm making you aware of that, to get it done with less educational impact, we're just going to have to, how should I put it? I am wanting to make sure it's okay to move forward, I'll definitely negotiate, uh, may one start date, which I think would, uh, eliminate a, a lot of, if not all, all the concerns. But I'll know more once I get a phone call, but otherwise, then there's different financial planning, so I, you need to know this before you approve the plan. So to summarize, um, the reality is, we probably will get two roofs done, some masonry work, and hopefully part of fourteen, but we may need to work around that. You know, we just got to figure out how much we can get done. But, um, if we can't spend all the three seventy-two, then I'll address other projects, and then that gets rolled into the next year. And then that's where the fund balance draw, as we've talked about, because we're at three point three six, we would use some of this to get it done. Instead of going to a, a building referendum, which we thought this time last year, we would have been marketing two months ago. So, in a sense, you know, the least amount of educational impact is we spend down and fund balance in fourteen, fifteen. We may overspend a little bit of this budget, but, you know, it's based on, we just don't know how much of, uh, roof fourteen can get done or will get done. And, and there's going to be weather too. I asked our consultant, when would a normal start date be, the average start date, he thought about April one. So, that's where we're at. So we have money in both years' budgets to get all the work listed done, but how we get it done, it's probably closer to option two, and it won't be option three. Hopefully it may, they can also work a second shift, I, I don't have my sundial out, but, you know, they can work, you know, perhaps they can do prep work. Maybe they can work one to eight, starting May fifteenth, they may be able to shift that way. Now, the other thing I will share, I do not know what the impact of the proposed increased, uh, wages would be, living wages as well as minimum wage. You know, this is government contract, so it has to be, you know, conform with federal standards. I don't, I don't know that impact, but, uh, you know, there's a twenty thousand dollar allowance in this project, so that may be good, may get eaten up if, uh, wages are increased. I don't have any specific information, but wanted to share that, more of an awareness of the statement.
What would, what would the parking lot work entail?
Parking lot is, uh, lighting, so the, that would be the light. So right now, with the D O T project, the three closest to the highway will be decommissioned, if you will. Currently, the system has two contact points, it's controlled in a closet behind me, as well as in the closet where we store the district documents. They're kind of a all or nothing situation, so we would take this opportunity to rewire so we can be a little more selective. We'd also rewire everything and transfer to L E B. Currently, all of our exterior lights on the walls are L E B, um, but we would make that conversion. So that's, that's one thing we do, there would be some energy savings, yes, it's a significant project, but this would allow us to run more efficiently. In terms of how we're, we're lighting, we could run, for example, lights, uh, let's just assume it can start at five until eight-thirty, we run all lights. But then we could go down to fifty percent if we know, you know, programming wise. One of the questions I have not, um, investigated, but it was brought to my attention, was to see if we could click the exterior lights on our, our hallway lights, or a similar thing, or the second, second circuit. And we could do it programming down to the minute, but that's probably more than we wanted to know. Does that help? And then we, then we bring the three back, you know, from, from the U P S truck hitting those, that one, uh, light two summers ago, those are about six thousand apiece. And we can compensate by the D O T, knowing that those three will change.
Any more questions or, of Mark on roofing projects? Do you want us to choose one of these three scenarios?
No, I, the, the scenarios are more for your information on how we would fund it, and so.
So you're just more looking for approval on the amount of the amount?
And the company for that matter.
Yeah, yeah. So I entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the administration, right? For J R T? J R T, I'll make that motion, you know, so eight hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-two.
A second.
Ten seconds. Is that right? Did you want to go, did you want it just for the roofing part of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it's, that's how it's supposed to.
Okay. Any more discussion on it?
We'd obviously come back if there's other projects above twenty-five, we'd come back to you for.
Yeah. What's on?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. All right, policy development, I mentioned about the following policy provisions. I have a motion to, not that one or four, one through four, or any, A through D. I'll make a motion, okay? Accept, uh, policies A through D, one, A through D. Second. Any more discussion about it?
Question, um, I see what, what happens, I guess this is directed at you, Asta, regarding the, the new math and science. Uh, that now the students will only have nine electives, or the beginning, as opposed to eleven. And, uh, historically, those electives are the effect of having two additional credits. Uh, affects the enrollment in the arts, wouldn't you say?
Uh, enrollment in all of the extra classes that are not academic classes. However, with this proposal, there's, there's, um, a margin that D P I has allowed us to use vocational courses. So, um, having wildlife and greenhouse management, and also accounting and C A D, which right now are electives. So, a student could choose one of those as their third math or science elective. So, in some ways, it's still maintaining some level of, um, you know, balance within those courses. Yes, it probably, well, I don't know, it would necessarily minimize art or music, if that's what you're asking.
Any of the arts?
Asta, can I ask two questions, um, I, because I don't remember the percentage, how many of our students currently take three credits of math and science?
It's ninety-some percent, yeah. So, I think that, um, when we did a, um, survey of all the juniors and seniors right now, it impacted like nine students total, total. And some of those students already are taking a couple of those classes that are named as electives. So, they still have openings within their, you know, class period. I think it would make very little impact, you know, I don't, it's not going to drive the students who are already taking pre-calc, who are taking algebra two, who are already taking. Most students take three sciences and three maths already, I don't think it's going to change that at all, and their elective will probably stay the same. So I, I, I see very minimal impact.
More questions?
Will those classes be available for this year?
Yes, and if students have already taken, taken them, they will, as a pressure, because it's this year's freshman class. They, you know, they can take those, those classes as their third math or science elective.
So what I guess, what I'm asking is, can they change, would they already submitted to, to, you know?
I think that's the clarification, the, this is an elective, not a replacement. In, in terms of science, you still have to take a physical science and a life science, so that doesn't change. They can't take.
So as.
They can't take greenhouse and, and animal.
Wildlife.
Whatever, wildlife, and then take biology. They would still, only one of those counts for an elective, and there, there's a conversation, I know this board has had previously in terms of aid counting for biology. That is not the same conversation.
Every freshman.
Because that requires biology benchmarks and standards.
Freshmen are required to take biology, sophomores in physical science, and a number of the physical sciences, math. As a freshman, they're required to have algebra, and sophomore geometry, or if they've already started in eighth grade, then, you know, progressive.
Right.
So, those are already intact. If somebody wants to take one of their third electives, either alongside the same year or the following year. But it won't, it won't change those classes, their freshman or sophomore year. But if you're asking, um, if, if a student now, I'll, we put in the course guidebook, we knew that it's going to have to increase by three. So we already put that in there, but we didn't put which classes because we weren't sure yet until the adoption. So the students are somewhat aware, I wouldn't have a problem if somebody wanted to, but really, they have plenty of time because they're freshmen.
Right.
You know, to make any kind of, you know, changes, but I don't think there's anyone that needs to worry, because they still, they have four years to address this.
I'm just saying, you already turned in classes, elections.
If somebody wanted to, would not have a problem with them reviewing and saying, hey, I want to, you know, do this consecutively this coming year, get it over with, I wouldn't have a problem.
Any more questions?
Yes.
Jim?
Sure, are we voting on?
Eight, 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 okay. Yes. Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Uh, discussion on current policy, fund balance, Mark was going to explain that.
So the two parts that were expected was auto replenish and the process for monitoring fund balance. They also asked us to put a percentage, you know, previously, when we worked with our auditors, they said, you know, it's up to you, you don't have to do it, now they're asking for it. So, um, Aaron, Randy and I sat down and we came up with this range of twenty-five to thirty percent. What does that mean for Wisconsin Heights? At twenty-five percent, I, that's a point at which we could go down to and have minimal short-term borrowing, borrowing. On the other, certain times of the year, for example, the June eight payment, you know, depending on when a payroll hits, you know, we, we still have two to three days of borrowing two hundred thousand to keep, you know, just to run payroll. It's not an issue, but, you know, what do most districts, larger districts can operate than fifteen or twenty? Because fifteen percent of a two hundred million dollar budget's thirty million. Um, and at twenty-five percent, or essentially two point five million, that allows us to have three big things happen, more or less, before we're borrowing a lot of money. It does hurt to have a little, if you will, cushion, you know, it's probably better to stay closer to thirty percent, just for the highs and lows. You know, if we have a project that people come together and say, hey, we want to do this, we have some options, you know, to keep it close to thirty percent. But that's how we got to that number.
Any more questions on the fund balance? First reading, A V coordinator and technology coordinator.
So with these, we did include the compensation, just as a perspective, this will be part of the manual, but just kind of put it in there. They are existing, but with responsibilities and configurations changing, then this is, this is where things are at. So this would be new, you know, a new job description, I think.
In the manual?
No, this would, this would be in the policy book, I, the manual would be the main title of the compensation.
Okay. Any more questions on that? Okay, discussion on implement weather makeup days.
So, uh, let's see, last, last Thursday, we went through a exercise, not everybody on the MINT team could make it. You got this at the same time, but as you know, we've had, currently had five days of weather cancellations, no early release, um, or late starts. We probably have four hours, you know, we could have two of those and, you know, and still be okay, but right now, we still need to make up two days. Currently, the calendar indicates, snow days will be made up starting June ninth. The reality is, we could normally do have additional snow days, um, and so only, only two days, making up two days meets the minimum days of student contact. And, um, I, so the challenge, how can we make up four days? I would hope that we could, would have a process in place that if something happens, you know, we, we talk about it once, then we're ready to go. Um, and, you know, the, the key, I think, to the challenge, and, you know, we evaluated, we surveyed, we found some ways, you know, prior to having to make up any. And those were definitely discussed, um, in the conversation. The reality is, we probably need to be prepared to make up a third or fourth day, you know? So, options, and we discussed, you know, currently at two days, June ninth, June tenth. Uh, four days, end of the year, that'd be nine to the twelve. Spring break, um, staff shared that, you know, the administrator's presence shared that seventy percent of the staff already have plans to be someplace else during spring break. Saturdays, um, that was discussed, people may add some thoughts and insights. Uh, the other thing to remember is the cost of overtime, and all of our hourly employees would be a time and a half, just as a perspective. The, what everybody in terms of voting had said, if we had to make up one day, people were buying into it, was change the early release day on the sixteenth to a full day. With students, and then on the eighteenth, which is a non-contact day, it would be a half day with students, and then everybody would go home, you know, midday. The other option, uh, for a second makeup day, it was February eighteenth, um, full day, that, that was scheduled to be a half day for conferences. So we'd create the, the standard that's, you know, getting to the hundred and seventy-five days of student contact, and then needing to make up four hours of conference time. But, you know, the last two I mentioned, still beg the question of, of the value, and I, I, I will say, I'm speaking for myself here. I, I appreciate the time and effort put into early release days, and I don't want people to think that we don't need them. Now, that's maybe not how people feel, but, you know, I mean, I'm speaking for myself there. I'm not aware of waivers being provided to districts after the fact, it does happen. Yeah, not after the fact, but districts can, you know, ask for, like, if there's construction, they try and change starting dates, end dates. But bottom line is, uh, we need to get, you know, as of this year, need to have a hundred and seventy-five days with students, and a minimum numbers of hours. And those change a little bit based on instruction, so. I wanted to go through that exercise, this is discussion only today, I think about it, and then, you know, you, I would hope that the board would be prepared to make a decision. Or if you need more information, we provide you with more information, and, you know, hope that decision could be made on the town, so we can plan ahead. The, the biggest thing, if we plan for four, then, the other thing I was going to say, if we only plan for two, is let's try to give people thirty days notice, so they can kind of square up their own business, so. You know, it's a tough situation, why are we here? Through no fault of our own, it's called mandatory start date of no, you know, no sooner than September one. And, uh, that's fundamentally, the, everything has been compressed, and, you know, that's where we're, we're at. It's, uh, it's, it's challenging because you'd like to, I mean, all of us, I think, my guess is, the goal when we were in high school was to get out before June first. And, you know, that, that legislation, about ten years old, it shifted it two weeks, two weeks forward, so.
Some of the questions that I've been asked with phone calls.
Yep.
Why can't we extend days?
Because we need to, a hundred and seventy-five days of the bus coming to the curb, it's days and hours.
I think they said, well, Madison did it, why?
Every district has different mechanisms, they have different professional development days. Yes, that's, that's the biggest challenge for our community members, is that everybody does it differently. I mean, there are districts that call early release days, cancel school a lot more than we do, and, you know, in the end, it's up to them, I'm, I'm not here to, I don't know what they do or how they do it, but that's, that's where they're at. Some districts are swapping early release for professional development days, but, you know, again, again, with my voice, I, I value those, and I, and I'd like more, but that's me speaking.
So is it a hundred and seventy-five days where everybody has to have the buses arrive?
Yep.
Or is it just us, and everybody does their own thing?
What do you mean?
Well, I, cause that, I just heard that funny, I don't know why, it was, so, so everybody has to have a hundred and seventy-five days of buses coming to the curb?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, all right, because it sounded like you said that, and then it was, well, Madison does this, and everybody else does something different.
No, their calendars are created differently.
Okay.
So when you hear that they changed this for that, their calendars.
They were just created from what they had.
Yeah, their calendars are different.
Right.
It's a great question, though.
Well, that was what was most given to me. Graduation is set for, you know, June.
June.
Day.
Any more questions, or discussion on that?
So if we did, if we did the June nine and June ten option, number one, that would be graduation?
No.
No?
I would recommend that people don't plan for that.
Right, well, because it said, because it's June tenth, a Tuesday?
Yep, yeah.
Because if we, we end our year on a Tuesday.
Well, that's, that's future. Future, the, the last statement that I have is, what I learned from this is, we tried to end the year on a Friday. The reality is, we probably need to start planning, and I'm not, this isn't this year. Or, you know, I agree with what I was saying there, but we need to end the year on a Tuesday or Wednesday, and that gives us a week, just as we've talked, whether it's been as a board, previously in negotiations, we try not to go to school for a one-day week. And so, how do you, how do you put that together?
There is a mechanism with the state that allows early starts before September first?
Waivers, yes.
Do you think this year would be evidence of why a waiver would be, we should maybe approach doing a waiver?
I'm not aware of them accepting those for potential weather issues. I mean, generally, it's, it's for construction, or, if you will, these one-time events, or, I know Oregon, it's, it's been driven on instructional practices, or how they're providing professional development. Now, if you capture that within that wiggle room, that can't be the reason. It's what a, you, you've got to use professional development opportunities, or, you know, how you're working with staff and students to drive it. I'm, I'm not an expert, I can, you can check it out, but I'm not aware of a waiver being approved because of too many prior snow days.
And then I see the Saturday on there, and what's that all, like, I mean, I kind of, that's an interesting idea, so to speak.
Well, what was proposed was make...
Soccer day.
Well, was, the, the two sides of that were to make it an activity day, a, a school spirit day, which, that, that may fit for the secondary students, being that you have students that aren't in secondary, what are, what are they prob, what are you doing on Saturday morning at that?
Saying my kids to school.
Okay, what were you doing last fall on Saturday?
Yes, I, yeah, I was in activities and things like that, so they're much more prone to activities, I guess, probably, maybe I'm not the right word for it. They're much more involved in Saturday activities.
I'll just say that that was my option, and it was only a specific Saturday, and it was Saturday, April twelfth, and the reason that we brought that up was that that's also prom, and there is a soccer tournament, a baseball game, a softball game, and the night before was a track invitational. And what we felt is since almost most of the school would be here anyway for an event, we put together this possibility of a kind of joint program on that particular day, and the possibility of, you know, I talked to a number of staff, and even like, the child development classes would be willing to, to do things with the younger kids, and for people who did not want to participate, similar to what we did with the Green Bay, when we went up to the volleyball state tournament, and we would have one person per department available for students to work. So we kind of had this, but it specifically was geared toward April twelfth because of that, and not just any general Saturday, but that one already has multitude of activities going on. So it just seemed like an ideal, especially for the middle high school, but we had some ideas, and I'm not speaking for Dale, because, you know, he's got his own, but we had some ideas of how to include the entire district, so just kind of wanted to, you know...
That's why you chose a Saturday, that Saturday.
That particular Saturday, and that, you know, prom is that evening, and just kind of a whole buildup type of day, a lot of teachers who are going to be here anyway to chaperal the event, and they were going to be here to run those events, that's why that one particular Saturday was something that the middle school, high school kind of brought up.
What you guys all agreed on the ninth, then?
I don't know if we all agreed, you know, so to speak, but, you know, just looking at what Mark had mentioned, you know, the old time aspect of it, you know, he's been there as well, but, looking at, when we look at the future possible snow days, where do you catch those up?
Right.
That was a big part of the discussion, so already has...
What's yet to come?
Correct, so I think we all agreed that was a concern, you know, to answer your question, you know, directly, you know.
For this year?
Right.
And were you asking, so if, if you would go at the April twelfth, then if the ninth would be the second makeup day, is that what you were asking, or were you asking overall?
Overall.
Cause if you make up one day on the twelfth, you still needed another day to make up the second day.
Right. That probably would've worked for the one, one cancellation, now we got two, and potentially a third one, depending on whether...
All of it, there's at least one more, it's not two hundred days yet.
Eighteen days.
Well, we, things are going.
All right, any more discussion on that?
Do you need any other information?
Could you, could you find out from the DPI?
On the waivers?
On the waivers?
I think that would be a good discussion, I mean, I'm not one who's starting the vote September one, but I understand.
I actually just called them, and he is correct, that the only waivers that are available are for professional development, and there is no waiver that's available for implement weather or future implement weather. There are professional development, if you already have a plan as a district, let's say you have, and all of these waivers are in four-year increments, so if we decided as a school, that the staff wanted to work on RTI this year, for the next four years, and you have to show data in all of that, that you can have up to four days, so the only loophole you could do is, you have these four scheduled professional development days throughout the year, period. Now, I suppose then, a school district could interpret, well, if we have these four days, and you have four, four snow days to make up, you could have the kids come there on those days, and then you would have the teachers do those four professional days on another time, you know, if you do to make up, you know. But, he is correct, that the only waivers that we can have are for a specific guided data, you know, growth of a four-year increment of a professional development.
Well, that, that may, you had mentioned earlier, I need your desire to have more professional...
Well, I don't want to lose what we have, first of all. But more, yeah, more would be a consideration, you know, that's, to be upfront, that's a thirty-two-thousand-dollar question. Adding, adding a day to the calendar is thirty-two thousand. And I would be including all of that.
So is that, is that four days a year, for four years?
I believe, I know for sure that it's a four-year increment, and I need to request a waiver for a four-year increment.
I think it's probably, you, you have an opportunity, you don't have to go four days, I think it's, what are you gonna do?
And I, I can't recall specifically, but I think it was up to a four-day professional development request for four years.
That would still push out, just talking that through a little bit, that's still going to extend the school year. So, if we added those four days this year, our last day without making up snow, snow days would still be a lot. So we...
But that was the intention of having the waiver, so you could start before September first.
Well, that's a mechanism, I would use the waiver for professional development, but that, that doesn't mean you back it up. I mean, that, then again, you know, you've got to ask, what's the purpose of the waiver? And if you're, you know, if you've got to be able to look in the mirror and say, this is, this is why we're doing it.
Would it give the district more stability with regard to calendar issues of implement weather?
I don't think so, no. Our, our students would be in school longer, they'd longer endate.
Well, I think the only thing you could do is, let's say you have one professional development full day each quarter, for example, and the students don't come those quarters that day. Well, if you have four snow days, you could have the kids come those days, and then instead, the last four days, June nine, ten, eleven, twelve, is just the teachers, although...
Only teacher makeup.
Right.
But, but then you don't, but then you don't do your mission as a result.
Right, I mean, you're, you're kind of...
Or, or you agree, or you agree, and I'm, I'm not, this, I'm not promoting this, I just want to be good, or you tell your teachers to show up, and you show up on a snow day or a weather cancellation day. And I'm not, again, I'm not promoting it, but then, you know, some people are going to ask, well, I thought those four days were for professional development, instead of doing instruction.
It's not intended to be that, that's just, I'm, for me, I'm interpreting that as, oh, a possible loophole, but that's not why you would decide that, and the waiver has to be, as I was reading it, it's, it's pretty significant, you have to have a plan, you have to have data, research, and then you have to submit, so, I mean, the purpose really is a very valid professional development.
And if you... You've got to use it as a professional development day prior to school start. Can't, you can't say it is, and then start school sooner and...
Right, because you have to submit your results to DPI on an annual basis.
And make you accountable for it.
Yeah, in about, I'm going to say approximately two thousand and three, everybody tried, being, we liked starting on August twenty-seventh, and they said, thank you for sending this letter to them.
And it's also not a given, you have to apply pretty, pretty far in advance, and, you know, do a presentation of your plan proposal, and then review it, you know, so...
No need for further information.
Okay.
Any more? All right, summer school offerings.
Okay, we're still, Dale, like, remember, we're still planning on the sixteenth, was that the thought?
Yeah, that was our last discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, I'm just verifying.
Yeah.
So we're planning on the sixteenth, but from time to time, and this would've been discussed a little bit more in committee, if we would've had the meeting, but we just kind of failed to schedule it, is, what we have been doing is remedial only. Any student can attend, but the focus has been primarily reading and mail, or at the secondary level, some specific credit recovery. There is a trend, it started, well, sorry, about ten years ago, oh, twelve years ago, when the DPI changed the reimbursement from twenty percent to forty percent, but the mechanism would be much like when you added 4K, that the first year would cost you some money to get started, and eventually, more neutral funding of it, and I'm not going to say, you know, the formula is, if you got a class going for seventy-five minutes, and you've got at least fifteen students in there, you break an even. Or you have a bigger class, and we're fortunate to have some activities during the summer that balance and help, you know, balance out our smaller classes. You'd always have some remedial classes to help students that need the most help, but then you also have opportunities to enrich our students and get them into good things. The question really is, is would you, what information would you like, are there, are you hearing of any areas of interest that we would consider over time, enhance, enhancing the summer school program?
The past, or just recent past, Dale, you've had like, just one section of getting ready for second grade, or whatever you called it.
Right, I think one, one year in the last seven years, we had two sections of jump start fever, and that's for the most part, it's one section per grade. And then our middle school classes combined, sixth up to the eighth grade, I think we split that in half one year as well, but typically, we have one middle school group, with sixth up to the eighth graders, but for the most part, it's about fifteen, you know, between ten and fifteen kids per grade.
And they, but they've been more or less curriculum driven?
For sure, it's reading and math, but a couple of years ago, we added a FIEC portion to that, so our kids would get, you know, they take a, they do their reading for an hour, you know, have FIEC, and then come back and do, you know, math, you know, or draw and that, essentially that's what it's been.
Are you looking at expanding that, then, to say more fun type of processes, or?
The originally type activities could be, could be a possibility.
Have parents or students shown any interest, is that better, anybody that wants to send their kids to summer school? I mean, is, is anybody asking for it, or are we thinking of, I mean, not that we're thinking of it today, but are we more likely to offer it, and then they'll come to us? Are people looking for more, are parents looking for more?
Other than just casual comments, conversations, you know, I haven't, I haven't received any calls, you know, I wish you guys would do this, it's been more along the casual, you know, I remember when we used to offer, you know, all these classes, you know, that was, I mean, that's, you said, the comments that I've received, I don't know, anyone else did.
You know, it was more meant to be grown up a little bit in the curriculum committee, but we're kind of, we're getting close to that planning, sent out the letter, if you will, so we put it out in the agenda, just to get feedback or ideas.
Was the lifting program on summer school last year?
The biggest thing is, is that there has to be a certified teacher supervising to get credit, and the students have to be residents of our district. Those are the two big components, without going into detail. And they can't be field trips to... About four and a half hour max?
Four, yeah.
Four and a half, I think it's a hundred and fifty. It's four and a half hour max per day per student.
Two hundred and seventy minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, one of the options that, you know, of, really, the summer school, really prior to my arrival, was there was a, you know, we'd go out to staff, and have staff propose classes, and then we'd gather those, and then the administration or some group would look at the possibilities for summer school, and then make decisions based on that, and how, how you make that happen, but I, I think the summer school, we passed, you know, originally, you know, let's say ten years ago, the classes were proposed by staff, do you probably know more about that, but, but that's one way how you, you expand your summer program, and if a staff member has an idea, or an interest of theirs, whether that's, you know, you name it from, you know, you could, you know, teach attendance to certain crafts, certain art, music, you know, they don't make a class proposal, and if you don't get that proposal, then obviously, you know, it's their idea, they would build a curriculum, and use it for, and use it for...
How would you gauge how many people would come to that class, or, you know, I mean, you get one student for that class versus having ten students for a class, I don't know how many...
Well, you, you have pre-registration, if you don't have enough interest, you don't have a class.
Like I mentioned, the magic number for breaking evens, seventy-five minutes, fifteen students. So that also, in a sense, gives you an idea, you know, some things you can do in a big group, other things, not so much.
We do that now, Jack, some of that, even with our, our registration, when we get the numbers, and, you know, there's years where we had to combine grade levels, I would have to combine, you know, fourth and the pre-class, or two pre-class, because, you know, you only get a half dozen on each, so it only makes sense to combine them, so...
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
You build it based on the proposals, and then the interest, which is...
On pre-registration, okay. We're going to discuss that, correct?
You're very good, but...
We were, kind of, yeah. Got canceled, yeah. It's kind of messed up a lot of things.
Any more discussion on summer school offerings? Okay, we'll move on to the board work session, mission and vision.
So I've got three, three components here for you. There's kind of a sample format on page thirty-seven, I ran across this, and then kind of took the work you've done, and then put it into, in a sense, a suggested format. So the vision that everybody's done, that, you know, that expresses the ideal. Mission statement, as the sample talks about, it describes the collective work we do, or are about, how we, how we do it. And putting that together in the suggested... we do it. And putting that together in the suggested format, and again, these are just suggested areas of emphasis, and how do you operationalize it, is the, you know, the one thing that came out that says practices the support rigors academic standards. But then, there's some other suggested areas. And then, the other part that I thought was a good way of setting, helping set direction was developing priorities, so we know what way we're going. So, you've got your work from before, part of it's, you know, you feel good about it, and then how do you operationalize that? And then how do you set priorities? And I would say, you've got time tonight to talk about it briefly, I would say, next board meeting, we'll have some time to work on this, too, just get to that, that point.
In suggested format, you've got suggested areas of emphasis.
Mm-hmm. The first one, the first one, the board has suggested, that's from the previous work, and even under our priorities, that's also good to discuss. The other ones are areas, you know, suggested areas, you know, things to think about, but then how do you make it true to discuss the things? And the sample kind of tells you how many, how this district has done a few things.
Any suggestions or thoughts?
I, I've spent a little time in a, I am no English major or whatsoever, but I took, using this sample here, I kind of thought of our mission as being our promise to the students. What, what are we going to offer? So, I picked out three things, and I think there should be four, maybe five. My first one was emphasizing the rigorous academic sta, academic standards. The second one was encouraging lifelong learning skills, and the third was community collaboration. And I thought we should have two or three others, and then pick, after finding those four or five, what I call promises to our students, then fill in what we actually had chosen.
For priorities.
Going to set up a, yeah, pri, well, not necessarily priorities, but how we're going to actually give them these promises. How will we fulfill these promises to the students? By, you know, like, the, um, celebrating differences, and, you know, that's lifelong learning skills, or what I call in that category. And I don't know how you, that's what my brain looked at this worksheet anyway.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I guess, we're going to have a discussion on it for the next meeting. Maybe we ought to just, everybody look at it, and come up with some ideas, and then next meeting, we can finish putting it together. Unless somebody's got some more ideas on it, Kim?
Do we feel that this, this is a good format for us to use, with the vision, mission, and priorities? I think it's.
It's a good question.
I think, yeah, yeah. I did too. Especially looking at the sample, and then going, okay. And I, I didn't get a lot of time to look at this, because I had some other stuff to take care of. But it, I think, you know, we sat down, we could probably tape what we, and everybody's done, by the board and the, and the staff, and start plugging in, like you said, in this format. And then I think we can get her pretty wrapped up. So, I mean, you want to do it right now, hammer it later. If not, we'll think about it, and come back to the next one. But being this time is, we still got a little more yet to do. So, I would say, let's, all of us look at it, and come up with some ideas, and then the next meeting, which is the 10th, correct? We can, we'll, we'll address it completely again. Does that sound all right?
Okay.
I'll do that. Future meetings and dates? Any, any more, any other meetings, please?
You'll follow to early next one for the next policy.
Yeah, we're starting on the 24th, we're starting at 6:30. We're WAB, so there will, and Aaron and I are coming from a funding conference, federal funding conference, so.
You might be late.
I'm not going to be late, I just meet at 5:30.
So, that, this time here is incorrect, it should be 6:00?
6:30 on the 24th.
That's the one. Anything else?
Carol.
Bring them closer. What time do I, what, what's the best view, Carol?
Well. I was telling Kim, I mean, we could do it on the 17th, there's not a board meeting after that, or we could do it on the 24th, followed by a board meeting.
Here we go on the 10th. What about? Well, yeah, I think, at 5:30, but 5:30, 6:30, or 24? Is that what you said? I heard the 17th, but I didn't hear the 2nd date.
24th is fine, me too.
Am I doing it right?
By 30.
Make a call later. Answer for me, too. 6:30?
Um, we're going to have a public relations meeting on the 17th at 6:30. Mark, does that work okay for you? Just to finish up from tonight?
6:30?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you think, just the, do you have just the one, or just, just have the one topic, or do you want to just keep both?
Both topics.
Yeah, just the, that's what I put here.
Any others?
Not, making motion to adjourn to executive, executive session pursuant to state statutes 19.85, term one, parent C, for the consideration of the last motion compensation performance valuation of public employee.
Still have a second?
Sue.
Sue?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yeah.
Tom? Yes, thank you all.
Jim, what's on your say that?
This is all simply on the fact, you know, it's a stellar game, it's written, it's still lost, all this is a great game. And that, that's not a shot, Jim, but he slammed it right in the wall.
This guy's a. Why don't you, why don't you do this, what you're hearing, why don't you pull one on the whole book?
I think it's more than, it's not more than.
So people see what it is.
We see that.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just. Wasn't the Larissa Moncor?
Yeah.
I drive, I drive this way, I'm going that way, it's 12:00, 13:00, it's 6 o'clock.